Please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair? Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
All right, will you stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mark, you want to say a few words for us?
Vice Mayor and Council, I just wanted to take just, just a moment just to recognize the loss of Pam Lewis, of course, our mayor's wife, and what an important person she was, of course, and Glenn and their daughter Laura and their grandchildren, but just in the life of this city. I know she had, was a schoolteacher here more for twenty-eight years and impacted the lives of a lot of students and parents, and she served on the Moore Norman Technology Board for a number of years as well, and, and I think all of us probably had been invited over to her and Glenn's home for dinner. She was, and a lot of, probably a lot of people out here, she was a, definitely had the gift of hospitality and loved to have people over to her home just to share what the Lord had blessed them with, with others. And one of my visits there, there's a picture of me, of Judge Virgin, Brooks Mitchell, and of course Glenn is in it, but the person you don't see is Pam. She's the one behind the camera taking the picture, and that's just where she shined the best, not necessarily in the spotlight for all to see, but behind the scenes doing so much. And I know she was a huge help to Glenn as he was our elected mayor, but she had a lot of, of, of good counsel to give him in times when it was really needed. So, I just wanted us as a city and as a city council, and if any of you wanted to say anything, that would be great. If not, that's, that's all right, too. I just kind of surprised everybody with this, but just wanted to take a moment to recognize that we, we miss her and we grieve with Glenn and Laura and their family.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
We appreciate all the encouragement Pam gave us individually through texting and calls and things like that, so she will be missed. Item two is the consent docket. Approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission held July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Item C, approve a contract addendum to the disposition and development agreement with the Curve LP Apartments and NHS Moore Curve LLC. Item D, approve membership renewal to the Oklahoma Municipal Management Services in the amount of five thousand dollars. Item E, declare the fire department vehicles described as a two thousand one Chevy Astro van, VIN one GN DM one nine W two one V one five two eight eight zero, and a two thousand six Ford Explorer VIN one FM EU six three EX six UA three six zero zero five as surplus. Item F, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two in the amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three in the amount of three million five hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and four cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item three, consider the final plat of Harrell addition located in the northeast quadrant of section twenty-three, township ten north, route three west, being south of southeast Fourth Street and west of Eastern Avenue, application by Samuel Harrell.
Vice Mayor and Council, this site is located south of southeast Fourth Street and west of southeastern avenue. The property is currently zoned C three, has a permissive use for mini storage. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with two lots. The eastern lot would front on eastern, that is proposed as a commercial retail site, and the western back lot that is adjacent to the creek is being proposed for mini storage. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. Access is provided by Eastern Avenue. The site does contain a FEMA regulated floodplain and all FEMA requirements must be met. On-site, onsite stormwater detention is required and the twenty twenty-one stormwater management criteria is required to be followed. The Envision More twenty forty plan calls for this location to be neighborhood commercial. This application is in compliance with the Envision More twenty forty plan, and an amendment is not necessary. Staff recommends approval of this final plat. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
You have any questions? Motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item four, consider rezoning application number RZ one zero two three, located in the southwest quadrant of section twenty-eight, township ten north, route two west, being north of southeast Thirty-Fourth Street and east of Sooner Road from A one rural agricultural district to A two suburban agricultural district, and approve ordinance number nine twenty-two, application by Jack Kieste Forney.
Vice Mayor and Council, this property is located north of southeast Thirty-Fourth Street. It is east of Sooner Road. The property is currently zoned A one rural agriculture. It consists of two legal non-conforming lots. They're both under five acre, five acres. This property does have one outbuilding on the site. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure the two lots and construct a home on one lot and sell the other lot in the future. In order to split this property as desired, the property needs to be rezoned from A one to A two in order to meet the two acre minimum per lot. The property currently lies outside of the city's utility service boundary. This means that each home site is required to have private water and sewer service until the city utilities are made available. There will be water service out to the site in the near future, but it's not anticipated to have city sewer at all. Access to each lot is provided from southeast Thirty-Fourth Street. There is no FEMA designated floodplain located on this property. The Envision More twenty forty plan calls for this location to be open space residential, and this application is considered to be compliant with the Envision More twenty forty plan, and amendment is not necessary. This application does seek to rezone two legal non-conforming lots to A two in order to accommodate two lots that are under five acres. This will be split into a more attractive and functional acreage home sites. You can see a layout of the proposed split on page one thirty-eight. Based on the existing surrounding uses north of southeast Thirty-Fourth Street and the planned residential subdivision south of Thirty-Fourth Street, being the hills at Timber Creek, the proposed zoning and use of the subject site is compatible with the surrounding area, and staff recommends approval of this application. There was one person who attended the planning commission meeting. She voiced a concern that there is a private drive on the property that crosses her property. She lives in the Twin Lakes Edition, and she was concerned that that drive would be used for a commercial business. During the meeting, when it was explained that these are for two residential lots, her concern was resolved. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item five, consider authorizing the budget of purchase and installation of four outdoor warning system controllers from Joe Goddard Enterprises in the amount of sixty-nine thousand four hundred ten dollars as a sole source provider.
Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. This proposal is to replace four of the electronics cabinets in our sirens, or in four of our sirens. This is a budgeted item and continues our, our upgrade of our siren system.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair? Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes.
Thank you.
Consider approval of an additional two thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents due to increased cost of a thirty-eight by thirty-eight concrete pad for the National Fitness Campaign, fitness equipment pad, and sidewalks at Fairmore Park.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is due to the increased cost of supplies when we were making, getting the fitness pad.
All righty.
And ready for the court.
Thank you, Sue.
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item seven, consider authorizing the sole source installation of fitness court equipment at Fairmore Park as a part of the National Fitness Campaign grant by Engineered Installation Solutions in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Engineered Installation Solutions is the company that works specifically with the National Fitness Campaign, and they're the ones that install the specific equipment.
So how do, how do, how does the grant work that we're, so we're going to spend twenty-five, is there a matching grant? Or how's the grant?
This is part of the, the amount that was submitted.
Okay.
It's included in that. It's just that they're sole source.
Okay.
Company, and no other company knows how to put together this type of equipment.
All right, very good. Okay. So this is just for the installation of that equipment?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item A, consider approval of a standard uniform lease service agreement with Centas as the most responsible bidder for uniforms and employees.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is for the uniforms for our crews with Centas, and it also includes our rug rental and cleaning. We solicited from three companies. Two of them were incomplete and unresponsive, so Centas was the most responsible.
Is that who we use now?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item nine, approve a jail services agreement with the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department to provide for the incarceration of city prisoners and detainees with the Cleveland County Detention Center at a cost of sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents per day for each person incarcerated.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is just the annual contract on the average daily incarceration rate for the Cleveland County Detention Center that we utilize for our prisoner housing. It should be noted that this cost went from seventy-three dollars a day down to sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents, and it hopefully will stabilize out somewhere around there, but we do see that fluctuate from year to year, but this is a great deal for us. I'd recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item ten, consider awarding a contract to Allen Contracting, the amount of five million four hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents for construction of the Eastern Avenue widening and reconstruction phase for southeast Fourth to southeast Nineteenth, project bid number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three.
Vice Mayor and Council, a little over a week ago, we received three bids for the Phase One Eastern Avenue Avenue Widening Project from southeast Fourth Street to southeast Nineteenth Street. Of the three bids, two were thirteen percent over the engineer's estimate and sixteen percent over the engineer's estimate. The low responsive bidder was eight percent below the engineer's estimate, and that was Allen Contracting. In reviewing their references and talking to ODOT, they do a lot of work. In fact, they're one of the largest contractors that does work for Oklahoma Department of Transportation. So, with that, we would recommend that we award the contract to Allen Contracting.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion.
When will it start?
I would anticipate mid to late October unless something comes up before that.
Do we, what's the construction range?
Three hundred and sixty days, one year.
Okay, thank you.
So will we shut down one half?
Yeah, we'll do half at, half at a time.
Okay, half north and south, half east and west?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll start and we'll do the, we'll do the, either the, either the, the recommended sequence of construction is to do the southbound at one time, but put the construction signing and traffic control.
Road will stay open, it'll just be one lane.
So the road stays open, one lane in each direction.
Okay.
Perfect, okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Do we have, we have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item eleven, consider approval of change order number three with BRB Contractors Incorporated for an increase in the contract in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars for installation of two double leaf hatches to provide sight for better observation and access for maintenance of the screen channels, with an increase in the contract time for delivery and installation of more two hatches of seventy calendar days due to a seven to eight week lead time for delivery.
Vice Mayor and Council, change order three is, is six thousand five hundred dollars, and basically what we are is providing hatches that we can open from the top. We're going to install them on top of the screens so that we can better maintain them and have better access to maintain them. The screens themselves are approximately twenty to twenty-five feet below the walking grate that, that we would be able to, we would have to look through now to be able to determine if there are any rags or anything that are caught in the screens so that we can go down in and make those improvements.
Where is this physically located at?
This is on the north side of Indian Hills Road, just west of Belmar Golf Course.
Okay, all right, very good. So this is still part of all that work that?
Yes.
Lift station work that we've been?
This is, this is at the actual lift station site, and they're, they're approximately ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent complete with the lift station portion of the project.
Okay.
And I will, I should mention that overall, the, this change order three, only, only the, the cost over the original contract so far in the three change orders is one quarter of one percent of the contract, so it's, it's been very, it's gone, gone very well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item twelve, consider approval of budget supplements for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three for prior year purchase order carryovers as follows. More Public Works Authority Sinking Fund for two million five hundred twenty thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. More Economic Development Authority, two hundred and two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-one cents. Street bond improvements, seven million six hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. More Public Works Authority, eight hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred forty-five dollars, general fund. Two million four hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents, special revenue fund. Nine hundred forty-one thousand dollars, forty-six, nine thousand four hundred, forty-one thousand dollars and forty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. The eighth cent sales tax, water system improvements, six hundred sixty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Half cent sales tax for public safety equipment and residential streets, seven hundred, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand twenty-four dollars and six cents. Four cent park public facility, seven hundred fifteen thousand forty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. CDBG grant is one million sixty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-four cents.
I'm glad you had to read that.
Yeah, lots of, lots of numbers there. Hard to read them in that line. Yeah.
Great job. Vice Mayor and Council, we're requesting your approval of a fiscal year twenty-three budget supplement for purchase orders that were outstanding at June thirty, twenty twenty-two, and were rolled into the new year after we closed the old year. A list of those purchase orders were included in your packet. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item thirteen, consider approval of a new job description for a heavy equipment operator in the sanitation division of the Public Works Department and assign to the pay grade of a hundred and eight of the salary table approved by city council June twentieth of two thousand sixteen, in accordance with the budget approved by city council for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three.
Vice Mayor and Council, the sanitation division of the Public Works Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft of a new job description for heavy equipment operator. This position was requested and approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one oh eight of the city's salary table approved by city council and, excuse me, on June twentieth, twenty sixteen. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have, and Tony Mensa is here as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item fourteen, consider approval of a new job description for senior heavy equipment mechanic in a fleet division of the Public Works Department and assign a pay grade of one-ten of the salary table approved by city council June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, in accordance with the budget approved by the city council for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three.
Vice Mayor and Council, again, the Public Works Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft of a new job description for senior heavy equipment mechanic. This position was requested and approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one-ten of the city's salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, twenty sixteen. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have, and Tony Mensa is still here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item fifteen, consider approval of a new job description for public works superintendent in the Public Works Department and assign a pay grade of one sixteen of the salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, in accordance with the budget approved by the city council for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Public Works Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft of a new job description for public works superintendent. In accordance with the public works submission for the FY twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget, each major division within Public Works will gain a superintendent who, under the direction of the Public Works Director, will manage, administer, and direct the activities of their assigned division, and will be responsible for setting priorities, implementing policies and procedures, and reviewing and evaluating the work. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one sixteen of the city's salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, twenty sixteen. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have, and Tony Mensa is here as well.
Good motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item sixteen, consider approval of a new job description for public works crew chief in the Public Works Department and assign a pay grade of one-ten of the salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, in accordance with the budget approved by city council for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Public Works Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft of a new job description for public works crew chief. In accordance with the public works submission for the FY twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget, each major division within Public Works will gain a crew chief position to perform and direct the activities of work crews within the assigned division. The crew chief will schedule work, equipment, and materials at the work site, complete work orders, and train, monitor, and coach members of the work crew. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one-ten of the city's salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, twenty sixteen. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
We'll make a motion that we would approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item seventeen, approval of a new job description for public works field supervisor in the Public Works Department and assign a pay grade of one-eleven in the salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, in accordance with the budget approved by city council for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Public Works Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft of a new job description for public works field supervisor. In accordance with the public works submission for the FY twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget, each major division within Public Works will gain a field supervisor position that will be assigned as a working supervisor to manage projects and manage and oversee planning of the work. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one-eleven of the city's salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, twenty sixteen. I am still here to answer any questions you may have.
We'll make a motion to approve the change. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item eighteen, consider approval of a revision to the job description of planner, current planner of the Community Development Department, changing the title to Associate Planner and assigning a pay grade of one-fifteen of the salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
Vice Mayor and Council, I'd like to change things up. The Community Development Department is requesting your approval of the revised job description for planner and current planner. To more accurately reflect the duties assigned to this position, the department has requested a title change to Associate Planner, formalized the duties relating to the administration of the Stormwater Quality Management Program, and added environmental design and planning to the education and experience qualifications. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one-fifteen of the city's salary table approved by city council on June twentieth, twenty sixteen. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have, and Elizabeth is here as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. We'll recess the Moore City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item nineteen is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Item B, ratify action of the city council regarding a new job description for heavy equipment operator assigned to pay grade one-zero-eight of the city's salary table. Item C, ratify action of the city council regarding a new job description for public works superintendent assigned to pay grade of one-sixteen in the city's salary, salary table. Item D, ratify action of the city council regarding a new job description for the public works crew chief assigned to pay grade of one-ten on the city's salary table. Item E, ratify action of the city council regarding a new job description for the public works field supervisor assigned to pay grade of one-eleven in the city's salary table. Item F, ratify action of the city council regarding budget supplements for the MPWA sinking fund and the MPWA for fiscal year twenty through to twenty, twenty-two through twenty-three in the prior year purchase order carryovers. Item G, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-five cents, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three in the amount of nine hundred ninety-eight thousand one hun, one hundred forty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket? Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item twenty, consider authorizing the purchase of one thousand four hundred and four Polycarts from the Sierra Containing Group at the total cost of eighty-eight thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents is the lowest responsible quote.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is for the purchase of additional Polycarts. The last time we purchased, we had just one load of seven hundred and two, and that is how they come. And we've run that through very quickly due to increase in new accounts, people requesting additional Polycarts, and then replacing old ones. So we solicited from three different vendors, and this was the most responsible vendor.
And my, and the note on here says stronger cart.
Yes.
That they're better carts.
It is. They use.
Sounds good.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes.
We got, we got out cheap with Public Works this meeting. Usually it's like a lot of money you need.
Yeah.
So good.
We'll recess the Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item twenty-one is a consent docket. Item A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and eighty-one cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt? Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. Item passes. We'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the new the city council meeting. Item twenty-two is new business. Item A is citizens for items not on the agenda. We have one person sign up to speak, Steven Adams. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Steven Adams, fifteen twenty, Southeast.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Feel free to speak.
Alright, well, it's going to be short and simple.
Alright.
Just had some questions to ask and that is the railroad bridge on Fourth Street. Where are we at with that? And does anybody have an idea or can you come up with an idea on a start time when this might start?
Sure. Be happy to answer that. BNSF Railroad is currently working on evaluating the ninety percent plans. We hope to get the approval, you know, here within the next short period of time. And we are on ODOT's construction plan for the summer of twenty twenty-three. So approximately a year from now, we should begin construction unless there's something unforeseen that happens.
Right.
And this has been this has been fully involved for almost eighteen months now with all the design and everything.
You know, I read articles on it and stuff and I knew it was in litigation, but you know, the thing is. You just really want to know, hey, when's when when is it going to start? And if it can't start, then we need to do something else because you know.
No, I mean, we've you know, we've worked hard on this. Unfortunately, though, when you have two other entities like ODOT and BNSF, they have jurisdiction over the product. And so we're kind of the project and we're kind of at their mercy. So.
Okay.
Sir, Adam mentioned that you live near us. I will tell you, we want it to happen as quick as possible too.
Really, I live on the east side. Oh, I know.
I'm right over by we're right by Veterans Park.
I came to a city council meeting one time and I was late because there was a train. You know, I couldn't get across and it's just a few blocks.
We've been really fortunate that our city staff has worked hard on it, but we have ran across some roadblocks that including ODOT and BNSF that just stop it and the litigation. But yes.
Okay.
And Brooks, can you speak to or maybe Jerry, Mr. Adams, I believe had also asked about keeping Fourth Street open. There'll be a. Can you explain how that process will work, how the traffic flow will work down Fourth?
Well, I mean, as far as the the project agreement that we have with ODOT, once the construction starts, Fourth Street will be closed from Broadway East to Turner Avenue. So traffic will be diverted to Turner Avenue to to Main Street to get out that way. By closing Fourth Street, the construct that'll shorten the construction period by six months.
Okay. Well, I know it's going to take a long time because the only thing I can relate to was in Norman, they did the same thing on Robinson. And.
It won't take that long.
It took a long time to get it completed. You know, it's 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 a big process because you can't scamp on anything because you've got trains going over this area. And you know, they have bridges going underneath it so that you could get through it on one side. You know, while they were working on the other side, but I know it's going to take take a while, but you know, the whole thing about getting started, I think that's what. Because I can remember when when I voted on the bond, you know, you're going like, yes. Alright, it's about time.
In a while.
Now, the cool the cool thing is through all of these delays and everything, we're going to save about half of the cost of that bond. That the citizens won't have to pay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And that's good.
Yeah. But that's part of the pain. That's part of the pains of this.
Everybody wants to get something at half price.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Alright, thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak briefly? Okay. Item B is items from the city council and trustees. That's good. Item C, items from the city manager.
Vice Mayor and Council, a few things tonight, just in line with the underpass project. We did we are the recipients of a ten million dollar raise grant which will go towards the project. ODOT was awarded this, so we're excited about that. That'll help with the funding of the project. We last late last week, we did receive the FEMA money for the ice storm reimbursement. So we've we now have that money, a little over two point three million dollars. Earlier this evening, as you all know, we were awarded an ISO rating of one, which is the best you can get. So congratulations to Chief Herbster, Robert Pistol, and Dispatch for all their hard work and making sure that happens. And then of the residential streets that were passed with the geo bond issue, construction is currently work going on five of the seven and they're in various stages of completion. But drove by there drove them this afternoon and you know, all seems to be moving along just like we hope so. So that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Item twenty-three is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
And the FEMA money's already been spent. That's just.
Yeah.
Did they reverse us for the interest?